Nine o'clock, let's call the meeting in order. Roll call, I believe Barb has gone today, correct? And...
Yeah, there's possibility, but I never, she never confirmed that, so there's possibility.
Okay, yeah, but at the last meeting, I believe she said she was planning on being gone. And Planning Commissioner Lori Litten will be attending by Skype. Because she's on Skype, all votes have to be roll call votes, so just you're aware of that. And for the audience, if you haven't grabbed an agenda and need an agenda, they're in the back bookcase. And anyway, and then today Lloyd LaCroy is representing the county board. With that, approval of the May 22 meeting minutes? Any additions, corrections? If none, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes presented.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, roll call.
Lori?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, today's agenda includes, I'll make sure, on the, Jerry, one emailed out, the only difference is they added additional details on the county, okay. Today's agenda is items through 27 with consent items three through 19, I believe. Yep, three through 19 is consent. Any changes to the agenda? I'd entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on the agenda.
Lori?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member. For separate consideration, the findings of this Planning Commission or recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision. And I always note that on conditional use permits, this is the final action unless it is appealed to the county board, so. And also, just, we've had a couple times where people understand, but on the consent calendar, again, it's all actions to be, if it's not pulled individually, when the consent calendar is approved, it approves everything that's on the consent calendar. So with that, Brittany, you want to read the consent items, three through 19?
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item three of the consent calendar is conditional use permit review CU 1511 for Neil and Terry Faust to review the use of an existing residence as a temporary residence while building a new single-family residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 1511 with the applicant's concurrence. Item four is conditional use permit review CU 9922 for South Canyon Country States Homeowners Association, Ron Davis is the agent, to review a community recreational area in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to approve the extension of conditional use permit CU 9922 with 12 conditions. Item five is conditional use permit review CU 9611 for Donald and Norma Lindy to review a double-wide mobile home as a caretaker's residence in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 9611 with seven conditions. Item six is conditional use permit review CU 9614 for Mark Hirsch to review a manufactured home as a caretaker's residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9614 with four conditions. Item seven is conditional use permit review CU 0101 for C.E. and Ursula Brackett to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit CU 0101 to the July 24, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item eight is conditional use permit review CU 1116 for Randy and Viola Scott to review a single-wide mobile home as a permanent single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of CU, conditional use permit CU 1116 with five conditions. Item nine is conditional use permit review CU 1614 for Ron Toof to review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary living quarters on the subject property while the applicant works to replace a single-wide mobile home that was destroyed by fire in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1614 with nine conditions. Item 10 is conditional use permit review CU 0848 for Spring Creek Premier Property, Cody Shad, to review an accessory structure, a garage and pump house without a primary structure in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 0848 with nine conditions. Item 11 is conditional use permit review CU 9231 for James Ori to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit CU 9231. Item 12 is construction permit review CP 1604 for Black Hills Power Incorporated to review the construction of a 230 kilovolt transmission line to connect the Tekla substation in Campbell County, Wyoming, to the Osage substation in Weston County, Wyoming, and the Langue substation located in Pennington County. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit CU, or CP 1604 with eight conditions. Item 13 is construction permit review CP 1705 for Anthony and Michelle Griffith to review bringing in fill to an area to level gravel and allow for reclamation of a remaining area. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit CP 1705 with seven conditions. Item 14 is major plan unit development amendment review PU 1502 for Deerfield Park condominiums to review an existing planned unit development in accordance with Section 508 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. To recommend, staff recommends approval of the extension of major plan unit development amendment PU 1502 with 13 conditions. Item 15 is conditional use permit CU 1721 for Cricket Lawn Service to allow for the storage of equipment of lawn and landscape, for lawn and landscaping business in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit CU 1721 to the June 26, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 16 is conditional use permit CU 1722 for Pamela Phillips to allow for a single-wide mobile home to be used as a permanent single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 1722 with nine conditions. Item 17 is major plan unit development amendment PU 1704 for Kelly Development, Ryan Kelly is the agent, to amend the existing planned unit development. Staff is recommending to continue major plan unit development amendment PU 1704 to the June 26, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 18 is comprehensive planned amendment CA 1705 for Kelly Development, Ryan Kelly is the agent, to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from heavy industrial district to planned unit development district. Staff is recommending to continue comprehensive planned amendment CA 1705 to the June 26, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. And item 19 is layout plat PL 1712 for Chase or Lonnie Phillips, D.C. Scott surveyors is the agent, to combine three lots to create lots one and two of Wicksville addition. Staff is recommending approval of layout plat PL 1712 with 12 conditions.
Are there any items three through 19 that staff wishes to pull?
No.
Planning Commission, anyone wishing to pull any items three through 19? Audience, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to pull one of the items I've just read, three through 19? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar, items three through 19?
Move to approve consent calendar with items three through 19.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Jerry?
Lori?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, approving all items three through 19. Item 20, conditional use permit 1710.
Item 20 is a conditional use permit request to allow a existing four-bedroom residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Currently, as the property stands, it is zone suburban residential, it is 1.5 acres, there is access off a Silver Spock spur via an existing approach. The lot contains a single-family residence with attached garage, a 30 by 40 attached garage, and in addition to the family, the single-family residence was done in 2009, and there is an existing onsite wastewater treatment system that has obtained an operating permit. The request for, this was routed through the interdepartmental review, the request for comments came back. The only item of concern that came back was that parking was not allowed on Silver Spock spur right-of-way at all. This was heard in front of the Planning Commission on May 22nd, and it was continued to this meeting in order for staff to look into the property to see if it was rented prior to the application of this conditional use permit. It was found by staff that it was listed on several vacation home rental websites, and it did appear through reviews that it had been rented in 2016. Upon that, staff had contacted the agents and let them know that they would have to pay penalty fees because it was operated as a conditional use permit prior to obtaining one. On May 22nd, the agent did come in and pay the penalty fee for that. Staff has received numerous letters of opposition to this vacation home request. So staff is recommending approval with 14 conditions.
Questions for Brittany?
I got my seat. Roy? Brittany, so with the vacation home ordinance, does it now meets all the current criteria that we've listed?
Yes, it does, and it has gone through the inspection through the state, and it did receive an acceptable score, so it did pass for their requirements, for their license.
Other questions for Brittany? Is there an applicant here and wishing to speak? Do you have any comments at this time?
From our president. Carson Goodwin, pick-up vacation rentals. And I have a letter here from our president regarding last year's rentals. If you'd like...
Yeah, please, if you have copies, okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or?
Yes, sir.
Questions for Forrest, was it?
Carson.
Carson, Carson.
Correct.
I didn't think that.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions. It says in here that, in one of the letters in our packet, that the, that the unit in question was rented on May 28th, is, was that correct?
Correct. It's under 14 days. We haven't, we are not accepting any more until this is approved.
So essentially, you're saying that the residence itself has not been rented for more than 14 days in 2017?
Correct.
Okay. My next question is, to what extent does VACO vacation rentals work with, within the covenants of the homes that you guys represent? And I guess what I mean by that is, do you guys do any research as far as the covenants or the covenant restrictions for the homes that you guys are, how should I say this, representing?
We do everything in compliance with Pennington County and the South Dakota State Health and Inspections.
Okay, but you guys, you guys don't do a review of the covenants that exist on the homes that you guys are representing?
That's up to the homeowners.
Okay.
Yes, if they provide it, we'll do a review.
So you put that back on your guys, your clients, then?
What's that?
You put that back on the clients?
Not necessarily. As far as this goes, we are unaware of covenants being even relevant.
Okay.
So you're intending not to rent this more than 14 days for the rest of the year?
Until, if, until it's conditional, until it is approved, the conditional use permit.
But then you're still going to exceed 14 days with the day that was not under a permit.
What was that, sir?
You're, you're still going to exceed 14 days, then, you're saying you're planning on renting it more than 14 days, so you're going to exceed 14 days, including the day that was not under the permit. I guess I'm not sure what the statute, I mean, it says 14 days without that, but I mean, the one day is still in violation to me if you end up renting more than 14 days with or without a permit.
So I'm not really...
To me, it's disingenuous that you knew that you were under that, you know, being reviewed.
Yes, sir. And to our understanding, we know that's allowed to rent your home out for under 14 days without a conditional use permit. So we will not accept any reservations until it's approved over 14 days.
I guess, like, to me, it's early in the season, I mean, it's...
Well, we have a lot of homes, and we're able to either cancel reservations or transfer them.
Okay.
That's what we'll do if we have to.
I guess, Brittany, I guess, maybe a question for you. I mean, like, to me, or Michelle, maybe even, it's 14 days that you can rent without going through the permit, but I mean, if it doesn't, does it really stipulate that, you know, if it 14 days plus a day that wasn't under a permit, you're still exceeding 14 days?
I think the strict interpretation of the ordinance is that you may rent your home without a CUP, conditional use permit, up to 14 days. So I believe what VACO is doing is they're, they're taking a strict interpretation and renting, taking, taking the position that they're entitled to rent the home without a CUP up to 14 days. After that, they're acknowledging that they're going to have to have a CUP. Anything over 14 days needs a CUP.
Well, that's what, I guess I would like to know what the strict interpretation is, because like, to me, is that even if you have a permit, if you exceed 14 days, that one day was still in violation?
I would not file a ordinance violation on the basis of these facts, as long as they don't exceed 14 days rental sans a permit. But the minute they are over 14 days and don't have a permit, then of course I would file. But under these facts, as long as they stay under the 14 days and obtain the permit prior to renting that 15th day.
Okay. I guess I'd, I'd like to see the state statute on that, because I mean, like, to me, I'm not sure it stipulates with or without a conditional use permit, since it's not all residents in the state have, or counties have conditional use permits. So if they exceed 14 days with or without a conditional use permit, this one day was still in violation, in my view.
I am, we have to apply, independent of whether other counties have an ordinance, we have an ordinance. So applying our ordinance, which allows 14 days, and also requires CUP, up to 14 days, they can operate without that CUP. The minute they hit 15, then they better have their, they better have the conditional use permit. And as far as the question of covenants, I want to reiterate, covenants are contractual agreements between the homeowners, and those are agreements that either the homeowners and/or the homeowners association may seek to enforce in court. Those are private contractual agreements.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Great.
And it might be more for Brittany, just out of curiosity, just so we can kind of get some clarification on your question there, Sig. Has there been any other properties in Pennington County that we're aware of that have done any renting of the 14 days without a CUP, and then eventually converted over to VHRs? Have we seen any of that anywhere else in the county?
I would have to say, from what my limited knowledge of it, because Cassie typically works mostly with Mike, that we have received complaints on properties that have been doing that, and then they have come in and come before you guys and gotten permits.
Okay.
So I would say yes.
I guess what I'm kind of getting at is, I believe, when they've been notified that they're in violation, most of them have suspended their reservations until they get approval?
I get what you're going with that, and, yes, I, that's why, that's why I was wondering if that's where you were trying to go at, because I agree, they could have done it for 14 days, but you're right, to be genuine about it, you would have stopped everything and brought that, to bring yourself up into compliance, and then said, okay, we're above par, let's move forward. Okay, that's what I was trying to, that's what I thought you were saying.
Mr. Chair?
Lori?
I think that there are instances where we've had people continue to rent as they're getting a CUP that I can think of. For example, in Silver City.
Lloyd? I guess after hearing, you know, we've heard several cases of people coming back forward for the VHRs deals, I have to agree with the interpretation of the ordinance and the law that, you know, the covenants are the homeowners' association's rights from everything that I've been involved with, and even the notes from the Planning Commission says, you know, "may consider the provision of restrictive covenants" with expressly specifically excludes the residential, vacation home rentals, and if you read through even the covenants, there is none. They have specific, saying no mobile homes, no modulators, no this, no that, but nothing about vacation home rentals. And so that kind of leaves out the, the commercial business part that's been highlighted by some of the residents, because it's, it's hard to say if this is commercial, if they're making a profit, or if they're just renting it out while they're gone and coming back and forth. It's one way to have two residents. So I understand where Sig's coming from as far as, you know, faithfully, you know, if you're in violation, you wouldn't stop until you get your conditional use permit. But, you know, I'm in, I think I'm going to be in support of this because it meets all the requirements legally and by the ordinance, and I hate to, you know, property owners do have rights just as much as the, the development area does, too.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission? Or go to the audience, if we have no one else at this time? Any audience members wishing to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record. Thanks.
Thank you for listening. My name is Vern Osterloh, I'm Vice President of the Copper Oaks Number One subdivision. That's just adjacent to Copper Oaks Number Two and Number Three. And I just applied for a building permit for residents in Number One, and I was going through the, the covenants of all the areas here, and I found that on our suburban residential district, this vacation home rental is, would be approved with a conditional use permit. But if you go into the conditional use permit, you as commissioners have, as per Section 17, or, too many thumbs in one hand here. Section 319 of the zoning ordinance here, vacation home rental, effective May 23, 2012, if you go to the performance standards, item number 14, it states in granting or denying conditional use permit for vacation home rental, the Planning Commission and/or Board of Commissioners shall uphold any restrictive covenants applicable to the property. Now, I don't know how you interpret the commercial property, or commercial business here, but there has been a Springbrook Acres Water Association use case back in 1993 that had a court thing about the covenants, and they were talking about somebody that wanted to put a radio tower on, which was figured part, as claimed as business, and the homeowners' association won that particular thing. But, you know, right now, our Springbrook acre, or not Springbrook, but Copper Oaks Number Two covenant states, "commercial business, no commercial business or business for profit shall be conducted from any dwelling constructed on these premises or the premise itself. No commercial vehicles shall be kept and stored on the premises." Now, also in that last legal battle that went to court, I have the definitions, both with the Supreme Court of the United, or not, of the South Dakota, and also found in the courts of a business, and it was declared a, a business, and so they upheld their covenants per the, per these standards here. So just to say, it's a landowner's problem surrounding, it is a landowner's problem, but according to your zoning, you, you've got to uphold the, the covenants of, of the Copper Oaks Number Two. Now, I suppose if you go ahead and approve this, and our only thing is to do a court action to stop this and sue the owners or whatever injunction to go that route, and you know, that may be the route to go. But anyway, I just want to bring up what you got in your own zoning ordinance that you have got to uphold the...
You may have an old version, then, because when the county board, was it last, last summer revised that? I mean, the way it reads right now, in granting or denying conditional use permit for vacation home rental, the Planning Commission and/or Board of Commissioners may consider the provisions of a restrictive covenants, which expressly and specifically excludes the use of the residence as a vacation home rental. And that's what I believe Michelle was trying to make the point earlier.
And that's the new item 14 under, when was that revised?
Last, was it January of this year? Okay. And, and, and that's what, like I said, and specifically, I guess the concern is specifically excludes the use of residents as a vacation home rental, and that's what I believe Michelle was trying to make the point earlier.
And that's the new item 14 under, when was that revised?
Last, was it January of this year? Okay. And, and, and that's what, like I said, and specifically, I guess the concern is specifically excludes the use of residents as a vacation home rental, and I agree, most, you know, the covenants were probably drafted and written before the term vacation home rental was in, in play.
That's right, most of ours out there were in the 80s and 90s.
Yeah.
And some amended in the 2000 range.
So I mean, the way I interpret it, and Michelle, you could help me, is, I mean, like, you could, the homeowners' association could amend their covenants to be specifically excluded, but the way the ordinance is read right now, it has to specifically state vacation home rental.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office, that is correct, and that is the intent of the language, that this commission may consider covenants when they expressly and specifically exclude the use of a residence as a vacation home rental. And the reason behind that language is that the interpretation of these contracts, these covenants, are better left to the courts and are very fact-dependent, dependent on all the language contained within the four corners of that document. Also, the South Dakota Supreme Court has yet to address how the use of a residence as a vacation home rental would be, how that would be considered. The majority of the jurisdictions have focused on the actual use, not whether the land, the homeowner is actually generating income, but the actual use of the residence. And the majority of jurisdictions have pointed out that the home is still being used for residential purposes. So although I understand that the neighbors are viewing this as a commercial business because the owner is generating income, the majority of jurisdictions have focused on the actual use itself. But South Dakota Supreme Court has yet to address that issue with regard to vacation home rentals.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chair, one question before you step away. Sorry, I was trying to catch you. So I just want to hear you reiterate again, according to the ordinance, if I read the ordinance correctly, F14 says, "in granting or denying a conditional use permit for a vacation home rental, the Planning Commission and/or Board of Commissioners shall uphold any restrictive covenants applicable to the property." It doesn't isolate it to say only if it says concerning a vacation home...
Which, where are you looking at? You're looking at three...
November 2014? Did I have the wrong one, too?
Yes, January 11, 2017, the new vacation home rental ordinance went into effect, and...
Sorry, I was on a committee, and I had that pulled out for the...
Subsection F14 specifically says, "you may consider," even if there is a covenant that expressly prohibits, prohibits vacation home rentals, you could, in fact, grant... Subsection F fourteen specifically says you may consider, even if there is a covenant that expressly prohibits, prohibits vacation home rentals, you could in fact grant a CUP if, in analyzing the factors that are set forth in section five-ten, and factors in terms of impact on, uh, the area, the adequate infrastructure, et cetera. But it allows you, subsection fourteen allows you to consider a covenant where it expressly and specifically excludes a vacation home rental.
I have a quick question. Is the, uh, uh, conditional use permit go with the property or with the landowner? So if, if he would sell his property and move away, then the conditional use permit is off? Or does that conditional use permit ride with the property? So if somebody buys the property, he will get a conditional use permit for a vacation home?
On vacation home rentals, I believe, if I remember, it basically have to get it reissued if, if it changes hands. A lot of our other conditional use permits actually go with the land.
But I, I know, I read through the old, uh, things, and it says that it would only stay with the landowner, it wouldn't go with the land. But I didn't, I don't have a, a copy of the new one, so I'm asking.
There are certain conditions, I mean, like if it's from a spouse, uh, that did get modified. There were some changes to that with the revision too. But I mean, generally, if it's a different entity or a different, uh, family or whatever, it has to be reissued.
So, uh, yeah.
I mean, they would have to go through the process to reapply.
I see. So if the, uh, Copper Oaks Number One and Two change their, uh, covenants to specifically match whatever goes here, then if they sold it, then the new owner would not be able to, if you guys follow your rules and, and, uh...
Yeah. Correct. The way I understand it. Well, and it's may consider again, right?
It's may consider, yes. That i- i- in that scenario, uh, if, if the homeowners association amended, um, the document, the covenants to expressly and specifically exclude vacation home rentals, um, going forward, if, uh, a new homeowner sought a vaca, a CUP for the operation of vacation home rental, then this body could consider, uh, that particular provision of the covenant.
It is not required to consider.
So...
It's may.
So you guys have a capital M A Y with quotation marks around it, so even if we changed all our covenants, you may just sit there and say, with that may part?
Unfortunately, yes. For you, uh, from your standpoint, yes. It's may consider.
But legally?
Yeah. And I, and I guess, I mean, that was a, you know, major part of the discussion on the rewrite of that is, is that it creates some issues if, you know, all of a sudden the county is enforcing covenants. You know, does it open it up to everything that, also the county is enforcing covenants, it's basically should reside between the homeowners?
Okay. Well, thanks for your time. I, I missed the first two meetings, and I'm sure the homeowners had expressed, uh, some of the problems they were having. But since I'm on the, uh, Copper Oaks Number One, uh, Water Association, and of course I got to, uh, make sure that the safety of the whole Copper Oaks, one, two, and three, we've only got one egress out of that area with, uh, as many homes we have there, and that goes out to Highway sixteen. And if you take a look at the number of residents, uh, we've got there, and I heard complaints there where we have some of these fires. You know, everybody wants a little background fire or whatever, and as dry as it is, uh, with somebody not living there and realize what kind of a fire danger we have, things like that. Uh, you know, I don't know, I think the, the, uh, ordinance says that, uh, the vacation home operator, not the owner, has to be within fifty miles. But if we're, if we've got complaints of, uh, a bonfire or something like that during dry conditions, things like that, and, uh, maybe trespassing on neighbors, you know, we, that, that could be a pose, a, a problem with the safety of the whole development we got. So I just want to, uh, put that out to the, the, the commission here. So, uh, thank you for your time.
And that was also, I guess, discussed in the rewrite is, you know, the concern on fires, it's, uh, you know, out here in the hills, it is a concern. And, and it is the owner's or agent's responsibility to form them of the, the fire laws and restrictions on that, and...
So they may consider that also then?
Uh, they're, they're, they are to basically inform them, the renters, so...
Mr. Chair, and just, and just so you know, just because this is written in, in black and white here right now, um, it has recently been changed, and it can always be changed again. You know, there's some, there's a process that you can, um, submit to have it changed or amended and things of that nature. So, um, you know, that is something else to think about, just like the covenants that you guys have for Copper Oaks One and Two can be changed and amended. Other processes can also be changed and amended. So don't think that it, this is it, and then you have no recourse. There's other, there's other ways to do, um, to go through the process or see, or, or let your input be put out there so that, uh, we can look at it deeper and in the future. We've got the, um, oh, what is it going on right now? We've got some meetings coming up on the twentieth of June for the, um, comprehensive plan. So that's a good place to get out there and get your input put in so that they're aware of what the people want. We're taking in a lot of, um, uh, comments from that particular process, so that is beneficial to help them develop that comprehensive plan appropriately.
Well, I'm a little disturbed with the, uh, the word may, but that put in there, because if we go through all the time and effort, I've got to get seventy-five percent of the homeowners to sign to amend the, the covenants of a, uh, area. And if you get, take a look at that many residents where we gotta go around there and we come next year and say, okay, here we have it, and then this word may comes up again, and it's just a little disturbing. So, anyway, I got to express my opinion, and thank you for listening.
Other questions for Vern? And I, Michelle, I assume you're gonna kind of maybe give reasons why we went through this. The other thing, Vern, I'd like to point out is, uh, if the, under the old ordinance as a suburban residential, this wouldn't have been able to go forward. That was one of the major changes with this current change, is that if it's over an acre, uh, in the suburban residential, it, it falls under vacation home rentals, where before there's like a window, and then it, uh, that window is passed, and, and a suburban residential wouldn't, wouldn't have been allowed, but under the rewrite, it is if it's over an acre, so...
Okay. Originally, I thought this was a low-density residential, uh, in our area, but...
I guess our report says this is, uh, zoning is suburban residential?
Yeah.
Guess I'm a little lost on the Quartz Canyon. Okay, so on the other side...
Kind of more orange color is, is suburban.
Okay, see, I'm in Copper Oaks Number One, and when I filed the building permit, I was, you know...
Yeah, you are in low-density.
Low-density residential, and that, that's how good I got my information here. So I apologize not to be, uh, completely up to date on everything.
Other questions for Vern? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I still, I want to reiterate that the homeowners do have recourse to enforce the covenants. And that what the ordinance, when it says may, the commission is not avoiding responsibility. What the commission is saying is that the courts are a better forum within which homeowners should seek to enforce these contracts, that the commission is here to apply the ordinances, um, as they stand. And again, it's, it's, it's a better, the courts are better equipped to interpret these contracts.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, Chris Lampert, thirteen, six fifty-two, Silver Fox Spur, just a couple doors down from Crowley's. I have a question for Mr. Vaco.
Uh, you, please address your questions to the chair. It's not in discussion back and forth.
If, the, the home was rented in April, so how many days was it rented in April?
Carson, I guess I would... You could answer that?
Carson Goodwin, Vaco Vacation Rentals. As I mentioned before, under fourteen days.
How many days in April?
How many days?
I'd have to look. But it's under fourteen days regardless.
With the, uh, weekend of the twenty-eighth, how many days were there?
I'd have to, I'd have to refer back to the, to the reservations.
Six.
Could be accurate, could be inaccurate.
I live there. I'm accurate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, in addition to that, there were guests that moved in again yesterday. Um, well, Vern pretty much covered the fire safety that I wanted to address. We've covered the, uh, covenants and no, uh, no, the, the ability, the fact that we don't have fences and that has a lot to do with, uh, the guests trespassing on other people's lands, because we do not have the ability. Well, we do, but we're not supposed to build fences, so we don't. Prior meetings, there were, uh, there was a discussion about some of the guests trespassing on other people's property. So, you know, I, I see that as a problem, because we live in Copper Oaks, we live in, we live right off of Spring Canyon. So if you've ever, ever hiked down Spring Canyon, you look up and it's nothing but cliffs. So if somebody was to take a walk and trespass on, on Hoffman's property, or our property, or Yellick's property, they would get up over that cliff, and all they'd have to do is take one fall, and they would be down at the bottom of Spring Canyon, and they would be injured. So, I mean, this isn't just, you know, saying I don't want a vacation home rental next to me, which I don't, but I'm also concerned about safety. If these people, uh, you know, trespass, they fall, they get hurt. Number one, we've covered who's responsible for that in past meetings, but you also have the injury of those people and all of the, the emergency responders. At the end of Copper Oaks, at the end of Silver Fox is where I live, and, um, I sent in some pictures, and there is one picture there of what we have as a, our fire hydrant. So it's not a normal fire hydrant, it's just a little pipe that sticks out of the ground that is what would be used. In addition to that, you know, it's only like two and a half inches wide. So again, my concern is fire there. We're trapped there, you can't get out. There's one way to get in and out for all of Copper Oaks, one, two, three, and Quartz Canyon. So you're putting all of those homeowners at risk. If they, in, in, in the past, last year, at least once a month, they had a party, whoever the guests were, had a party and parked on both sides of the road, making it totally impassable for us to get in or out to our own home. Now Crowley's have a big driveway, so that is, if, as far as the guests visiting, that's not a problem. They have a big driveway. But when, when their guests have parties and they park on both sides of the roads, it becomes completely impassable for us and any emergency vehicle that may or may not need to get in there. Pennington County Sheriff's Department normally has one person, uh, patrolling that, uh, the whole, what, western side of, uh, Pennington County at any given time. So if we were to give them a call, you know, they could be all the way out into wall. In the event that this permit is granted, will the local contacts come to the resident and ask the party guests to go home? Or will they pick up the phone and return a call in a timely manner? Or will we be forced to, to call, uh, Pennington County Sheriff's Office? Uh, has the agency, Vaco, has the agency been quick to respond to the questions from the county? I didn't get that impression, but I, you know, I'm not working with them. Otherwise, because had they been, we would have taken care of this last meeting and not taken up additional time this meeting. We would have been able to take care of all this at second meeting. Pennington County Sheriff's Department, I'm sorry, I kind of lost my place. Um, just a reminder that during the first meeting, Vaco did give the impression that the home was not rented at all last year, when in fact it was. It was also, again, rented in April, dates, total date's unknown, and I frankly didn't see that one, so I don't know. They've got six, uh, they had six days in there for their last renters, and new renters just moved in. I'm assuming that, uh, that, that, that the county did their due diligence and that Vaco paid all taxes based on what, what was made last year. Because I, we checked the, uh, they get like three hundred and ninety-five dollars to five hundred and ninety-five dollars a night for this residence. So it is, uh, you know, it does make some pretty good money when they rent it all summer long. How, how do, how does the homeowner or Vaco make or encourage the renters to actually, you know, um, follow the, you know, not trespass, not smoke, not, you know, do all of that? Oh, my God, I'm losing it today. I apologize. Wait, during the first meeting, um, Mr. Goodwin, right? Is that your last name? No? Yes? Mr. Goodwin stated that they were planning on, um, renting the home for about sixty days a year. Is that the max? Is it going to be sixty days a year? Is that going to be part of the conditions if the, the permit is granted? Or, you know, is it going to be as long as they want?
I guess in response to that, I don't believe we, on, most vacation home rentals, there's, once it's approved, there isn't a set number of days.
That's what I was afraid of. Okay, so back to the concerns. Um, the Hoffman, Lampert, and Yellick residents are all backed by Spring Canyon. While very beautiful, it comes with its inherent, its inherent dangers, such as very steep hills, cliffs, and rattlesnakes. This is a safety concern. Based on what Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Yellick both stated during the first, uh, meetings, the renters do not pay much attention to where or whose property they are on. Of course, we are concerned about the possibility of any liability with trespassers. We are also worried about injuries and the safety of others. And then I included some photos of the cliff. And even, the, the terrain's even risky or rough for anybody that's familiar with the terrain. We've been out there for eighteen years, and I still find it sometimes very difficult to navigate. Covenants. Then I included a map for your review as to which ones are in Copper Oaks One and which ones are in Copper Oaks Two. And to reiterate what, uh, Vern said, we have one narrow road, uh, that gets us, Silver Fox is fairly narrow. Wilderness Canyon is our only way out. We have very rough terrain. And furthermore, we don't want this type of activity in our neighborhood. Having a vacation rental property in our neighborhood doesn't allow Copper Oaks homeowners to feel safe, comfortable, or secure in our own homes or yards. We, we are worried about the possibility of injuries, the loss of comfort and peacefulness of our own home, and, um, in any way renters renders other persons insecure in life and use of property. We used to be able to come and go and not worry about who was in the house next door, because we knew who they were. We no longer have the freedom to do that. We don't know who is going to be around when our kids or, in my case, grandkids, um, come and visit and go for a walk. That leaves us insecure and uncomfortable in our own yard. In accordance with section three nineteen of the vacation home rental section F performance standards, item four, the owner, local contact, shall educate occupants and guests of the vacation home rental. Pennington County Ordinance one oh six. If this permit is issued, how will Vaco do a better job of educating the renters? Pennington County Ordinance one oh six states, an ordinance for the declaration and abatement of public nuisance pursuant to South Dakota C L seven dash eight dash thirty-three and seven dash eighteen A dash two. And consistent with the purpose of creating and maintaining a safe and healthy environment for public welfare, uh, Pennington County residents in their, whatever. Wherein, the county believes a general definition of a non-exhaustible list of conditions declared to be public nuisance will serve to clarify potential public nuisance situation in uncooper, uh, unincorporated areas, therefore. So the definition, basically, it's unlawful to do an act or anything omit, omitting to perform a duty which act or emissions annoys, injures, endangers the comfort, response, or health or safety of others in any way renders other persons insecure in life and use of property. Based on the location of the Crowley property, it will be a public nuisance because we are not allowed to have a fence... not allowed to have a fence that would keep people renting or guests of the renters off our property. Due to the nature of our surroundings and the terrain, this endangers the renters and the guests of the renters when they trespass on our property. If this permit is issued, the strangers in our neighborhood would remove the current peacefulness of our area and create a safety hazard to trust, to any trespassing renter or guest. In addition, we believe this is a business active, uh, business activity leaves all of us vulnerable, oh, leaves us vulnerable, including the possession of, or the possibility of theft, break-in, trespassing, and uncontrolled access to our property. Given that there are no, given that there are others utilizing, utilizing the Crowley resident, not just the renters, we do consider this a nuisance and a safety hazard to everyone in the development, homeowners and renters alike. Thank you.
Questions for Chris?
Who else is using the property besides the renters and the Crowley's?
Sometimes they, well, in the past, at least once a month, they had parties. The guests had parties.
The, the people that are renting the house?
Yes.
Are having parties?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you believe more than twelve people, including children, were there?
Uh, during those parties, yes.
Mr. Chair. Well, I don't necessarily have a specific question. I don't know how it's gonna go today. I know how I'm leaning on this particular, um, agenda item. But whenever there's an instance of trespassing or any of that kinda stuff, it needs to be documented every single time that it happens. Uh, one, because again, one of the conditions of this permit is it'll be reviewed upon one year or if there's any complaints. So if the property manager is not appropriately educating their guests, then it's a recourse that you would have with the county.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that you understand that aspect of it, because I can see, since you don't have fencing, how that can be, um, be, be an issue in this particular area. So I just wanted to point that out to you.
Thank you.
Are there questions for Chris? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Uh, Vern, before, see, honestly, if anyone else wishes to speak before I have a second. Come on forward, so.
Joyce Chagru, uh, just a historical perspective back on whether, uh, they continue to advertise and rent while they're in the process of getting the CUP. Historically, planning and zoning issued cease and desist orders, uh, that they were not to rent, and they were to pull their advertising off of their websites until they got their CUP, once it was known that they were in fact renting past the fourteen days.
Thank you. Questions for Joyce?
So that's an option that may not, there may not be using now, but they could monitor then. Uh, if the neighbor said, "Yes, they were renting and they were under cease and desist," that made it more, uh, severe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak that hasn't spoken, and then if not, go to, back to Vern?
Thank you. A quick question. The very first, uh, condition is the maximum overnight occupancy of six and twelve during the daytime. So if we do have a large party there, is it, uh, our responsibility then that the sheriff to have a head count on there so that it is, uh, witnessed in the complaint, the party and blocking roads and a, a head number?
Uh, one of the things that, that I guess that, uh, maybe Brittany can help me out in this, that we're trying to get a little bit better communication between, between departments, because for the conditional use permit reviews, to see if they've been following the, you know, the stipulation they're supposed to, uh, sometimes that information didn't get to the planning department. It may have been called to the sheriff and it should have been reported to the planning. Uh, and I know that we were trying to improve that. I think that's kinda steps I've been taking that. Brittany, I guess if, you can kinda, uh, but, but in, in some ways, I, I guess I think you're still safer reporting it to planning and probably, I don't know if the sheriff's department would enforce it or not.
But if we do call the sheriff, we have to make sure the sheriff notes how many people are on the property at the party at that time, then for us to come back to, uh, you know, when they issue next year's conditional use or, uh, violation. Plus, do their advertisement in the website or whatever say a maximum of six overnight?
Uh, I, I know it didn't the first time, and I don't know that it's limited now. I know that was a question. I can't remember, was this property or a different property that listed more than?
Okay, I just wanted, just to make sure that we know what the ground rules are. If we call the sheriff and the sheriff has to come out there, do, uh, what would be you guys sitting there, uh, responsibly, or what would click that, hey, this isn't working out very well at all, the way they're operating their, uh, vacation rental? Is, with the parties being over twelve and more than six spending the night?
My understanding from one of our previous meetings recently is it says daytime occupancy limited to twelve, and it doesn't differentiate between kids and adults. The twelve is twelve.
And so what's daytime, when's daytime end and when's the evening party start? Is there a time, things on this?
Well, they can't overnight.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, then one more, one more. I'm, uh, also president of the, uh, the Water Association, and our water towers are directly across the road from this, uh, rental property. And as Chris said, you know, people like to walk, 'cause we got a beautiful area there, but there's a little trail going just up the hill, and there's our two twenty-five-thousand gallon water tanks. Uh, it looks like it's, could be public property. It isn't, it's, it's our Copper Oaks, number one, but if you go another forty feet behind that, uh, it goes three hundred and fifty feet down Spring Creek Canyon cliffs, and it's just limestone cliffs there. And so, uh, you know, I didn't want anybody to poo-poo off this, it's really dangerous there, but, um, you know, Dark Canyon has that stuff up there where people fall off and die. Uh, this is, is very dangerous also, and it's not fenced off. We don't have any fences, there's no signs, uh, saying that, "Watch out, cliff," things like that, because, uh, well, usually we didn't have a lot of people trying to go up there, but it is a dangerous area.
Questions for Vern?
And thanks again. Thanks.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I'll try to answer your question. Typically, when that would happen, we would have to receive the complaint and probably contact the sheriff's department to substantiate that complaint. Is typically the way that that process would work. They wouldn't call us, 'cause they don't know, you know, zoning and planning.
Well, I, I know, like, on the weekend, you're not gonna get called to, to go out there and count, but I guess I'm just saying that it gets reported. And, and I guess I would have a, you know, probably from the homeowner's concern, that was expressed earlier, is if it's not an emergency and, you know, there's a lot of things going on in the week, weekend, you have limited sheriff staff, I mean, it may be hours before they get out there, especially if it's just to do a head count. You, you could have people disappearing off-site, uh, so.
But that would be our process, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then one other thing I wanted to bring up, based on your question that you had asked if they had met all of their requirements of their licensing. Um, Amy and I were reviewing their inspection report, and it looks like they did have some immediate action items, and it wasn't clear in the staff report. Like I said, Cassie did the staff report, so I'm kinda coming in on the tail end here if those violations have been cleared. It looks like they were done in March, so, sorry. If we could find out if that was done, that would be good. It looks like they have a couple with some carpeting on the lower level and a bathroom, and some smoke detectors, and some fire safety violations.
So Brittany, are you saying that they haven't, as far as we know, they haven't taken care of those action items that we're aware of?
I, I'm not aware of it. Like I said, Cassie may have been, I kinda came in on the end here. I don't see where it's documented in the staff report or anything to that fact. It's on the second page of the inspection report. Towards the bottom, it says immediate action and deadline dates. So, I just wanted to clarify that with Commissioner LaCroy's question to make sure that that's been addressed.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, Mr. Chair, can I ask Brittany a question?
Sure.
Um, Brittany, could you please tell me when they signed the statement of understanding what they're agreeing to?
They only agree to the conditions of approval.
The conditions of the conditional use permit?
Correct.
Okay, and then I have one other question. I don't know if you guys recall, um, the property that we were concerned of that had a portion of the property in the floodplain?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that's when we talked about safety concerns and about, you know, I think that property only had one driveway in and out. Um, I was looking at condition number seven, and, um, do you recall us ever adding anything to condition number seven to reiterate something related to fire safety or the concerns about, you know, the cliffs, you know, the other dangers in the area, trespass, things like that? I can't recall anything, but, um, I think that under item seven, that may be an appropriate place to maybe emphasize the dangers associated with the property.
Yes, and I, I agree. I don't, I don't recall that either. Um, I do know with the floodplain, I believe that they were, um, concerned about an evacuation plan and providing that, um, for the, the occupants when they stay.
So for this particular property, um, I understand that they are required to provide an evacuation plan?
Yes.
And you have reviewed, it's been reviewed and accepted?
Um, I am not aware that it has been, no.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Other questions for Brittany? Carson, maybe you could, uh, if those violations have been addressed, could you respond to those?
Carson Goodwin, uh, VACO Vacation Rentals. And we had the, uh, South Dakota Health and Safety Inspector come out to our property, and she measured windows and, and, um, the home passed. That's, that's as far as I know in regards to the safety and...
Specifically, the ones that Brittany mentioned that were in violation?
I guess, I guess Cassie would be more knowledgeable on this, since I, I walked the property with Cassie, and she said everything looked great, so.
Right, but these aren't our, um, immediate actions, they are for their licensing.
Okay.
So it was just something that was noted on their report, um, 'cause they scored a ninety-one out of a hundred, and that looks like...
Does that mean that the licensing from the state is pending until those are corrected?
I, I do not know that. Do you, do you actually have a license in hand?
I'd have to refer back, see what I have.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause I mean, isn't ours contingent on that being in place, so if that's not in place?
Um, we actually ask that they at least submit their application for that, um, in their conditions of approval. I believe that is a condition that they actually have to maintain it. Yes, number four. And copies of those licenses be provided.
And you don't have a copy of those licenses?
I am not aware that we do.
It does say the inspection report was okay to operate and license.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, on page two of two, under the published comments, it says, "Okay to operate and license." Um, but immediately below that, um, the, it has the immediate action and deadline at dates on there, and then it was inspected by Charlotte Johnson on March twenty-eighth. Um, but the, that doesn't say whether or not the immediate action and deadline dates have been completed. It does say okay to operate and license.
Appreciate that clarification, thanks. Uh, I, I guess Carson, a question I had, I guess, is are you, uh, informing them of the limitation of twelve during the day?
What is that, sir?
The, the permit would, would limit to twelve people per day. I mean, that's already, from the state, not from the county, that's coming from the state.
Yes, sir.
So are, are renters being informed of that?
Yes, sir, twelve people.
And then the parking issue, are you aware of the parking issue, where the road's being blocked?
Um, we don't allow, there's plenty of parking in driveway, enough for at least four vehicles, three to four vehicles. Um, and I am aware that you cannot park in the street.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions for Carson. Um, my first question is, uh, based on one of the, the homeowner's questions. If you, um, and Bailey are out of town, uh, what, what process is there? Who picks that, who picks that up if this house is rented and you guys are gone?
Um, who picks up what, which responsibility?
Yes.
Of responsibility of doing what?
Being the local contact.
Being the local contact, I'm always here. Um, Bailey's second, she's, I would be always here as well, my brother, um, Colin. We have plenty of contacts to make sure there's someone in Rapid City at all times, within fifty miles, I guess, is what he said.
What is your guys' process if a complaint comes in from an, a, an adjacent landowner to a property that you guys are representing?
Our process?
Adjacent landowner calls, calls your office, says, um, "Hey, somebody is, is renting this house, um, next door, and XYZ is happening." Um, you're listed as the local contact.
Sure.
What do you do?
First thing, I guess, would be tailored to the comp, uh, complaint, first off, and then we would address it if it's, um, outside of our boundaries, we would, um, be sure to have, make, make amends, make, fix it. So I guess that would be your process, but it would be all tailored to what's happening on the property.
Okay. Have you guys ever had to remove anybody?
No, sir, never.
There's a statement that was made that it's being rented currently, is that correct?
Sir?
Is it being rented currently as of today?
Correct. Today. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, Laurie, go ahead.
Um, Carson, could you, um, explain to me, um, what you do to make your renters aware of any issues as far as like egress, um, safety, that kinda stuff, you know, on a particular property?
As far as an evacuation plan?
Well, or, you know, I mean, you've heard the homeowners here talk about rattlesnakes and falling off a cliff and egress and fire, um, just, you know, general, um...
Sure.
How, how do you make a renter aware or, you know, just, you know, just of certain dangers in the Black Hills?
Sure. Well, first off, in regards to the egress windows, um, that's something that Charlotte addressed, and she approved the house, and, and the egress are up to code. Um, second off, um, as far as wandering on properties, it's trespassing. We urge other homeowners, if they're trespassing, to call the police and document it, or they could call, contact us directly. Does that answer your question?
Um, do the renters have to agree to or sign anything that says that, you know, "We're aware of any dangers associated with, you know, an area and that where they accept the liability," or just anything like that?
They do sign a, uh, rental agreement, and it does have quite a few clauses, but I will, uh, I'm not sure as far as there's, it's quite a lengthy agreement, so I'd have to refer back to that.
And, and just in general, um, based on your experience, when people are renting homes, um, for example, in the Black Hills, do they tend to ask you questions about stuff or, you know, just, I know you guys haven't been doing this for very long, but...
Absolutely, as far as recommendations as, um, attractions, um, dining, whatever may be, yes, we, we do, we can, um, provide recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions for Carson? Thank you.
All right.
Chairman.
Wait.
I have a question from Michelle. Michelle, are you, are you familiar with the laws with the, the conditional use permit with MG oil in the city of Rapid City?
Are you referring to a particular Supreme Court decision?
Yeah.
In a particular case? No, I have not reviewed that case.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is because part of what happened is they wanted a conditional use permit on, uh, Haynes Avenue for a casino, and what happened is a lot of residents come forward and discussed, "This could happen, that could happen, our crime's gonna increase." They, you know, had a lot of stuff along those lines, and, and the court went to Supreme Court, and, you know, the business won. On the, it was pretty much on the grounds, it was a lot of speculation that didn't happen, that there was no document, documentation of these problems. This business was gonna make all these problems happen, is, that's why I asked that.
I, without reading the case, I suspect what occurred in that case is there was an application for CUP, and, and I'm not familiar with the city's criteria with regard to issuing a CUP, but I suspect they considered the testimony presented by the parties, interested parties, and concluded that within their criteria, uh, a CUP was appropriate. parties, and concluded that within their criteria, a CUP was appropriate. And with what you're saying, it's speculation, it's what if, maybe. And I think that gets back to Commissioner Lassiter's statement that should these what ifs occur, then this needs to be brought back before the planning commission. And the CUP could be revoked at that time. So certainly, if VACO is not a good steward of this business, and the what-if problems are encountered, then certainly the neighbors should contact the planning and zoning department and bring this back before the commission.
Just a follow-up. You know, I just wanted to make that clear with some of the residents that are in the audience. Because, you know, as being the commissioner, we try to be equal and fair. You know, we've heard appeals, and a lot of the commissioners up here on the planning commission have been involved with the vacation home rental redrafting, and they know how long of a process it was, and strenuous, and heard a lot of testimony on both sides of it. In fact, the commissioners, you know, they just denied one that I recall, no more than a couple of months ago, that was a vacation rental, because it didn't meet the requirements, and so forth. So I think they've done a good job. But I think part of our job is to be equal and fair to the work that everybody's done, and go from there is my thoughts.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Absolutely. And when you look at section 510, it sets out the criteria for this commission to consider. And the information that's been brought forth by the community, by the neighbors, is important with regard to whether there's adequate infrastructure, utilities, roads, off-street parking. All the concerns that they brought forward are very valid. But as you mentioned, we can't speculate. We have to look at the concrete information that is presented today.
Joyce Chagru, Commissioner LaCroy. I've been on both planning committees for the development of the first ordinance and the revision that took place in January. And we were very aware of the MG Oil lawsuit that came out during the first go-round on developing the first ordinance. And it is very difficult. And what you're hearing today is typical. Trying to project what will happen in the future, not knowing if in fact it will. And walking that fine line between the homeowners and the business proprietors is very difficult. And we do not want to not have these businesses, and I call it that on purpose, in our, in our area. But each group of homes or subdivision is unique, and it's very difficult to make that decision. Is this one, because of the cliff, something you would deny? Or do you wait for somebody to fall off? And then you have, you have something for review next time. It's really a very difficult decision that you have to make. And I always appreciate the discussion. But what you've heard today, we have all gone through this discussion over the last six years many, many times, Sig knows. And the decisions are not easy. Some are. Some are easy. But many of them are not. And this is just typical. It's amazing to me how complicated it is. And it's a fine line. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Staff's recommendation is for approval, conditional use permit with 14 conditions. Laurie did bring up some good points in regard to seven. I don't know if anyone wants to add anything, you know, I think related to the dangers of the cliffs and some of the fire issues. I mean, there's uniqueness that no fences are allowed by the homeowners association, which kind of creates more issues too, as far as trespass that could lead to a safety issue. But anyway, the planning staff is recommending a 14 conditions. I don't know if anyone wants to venture a motion or any changes. Laurie, I didn't know if you wanted to make formal changes to seven, as you suggested?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit 1710 with the stated conditions. And my comment would be that I would like something added to item number seven, that to emphasize the, you know, some of the safety issues associated with this property. You know, egress and ingress is only one point. There are fire safety issues associated with the Black Hills. The particular things related to the no trespass on this property, because there are no fences, and the cliff danger.
We have a motion and second for approval with 14 conditions, with seven being modified. I guess, Jerry, are you clear enough on what to add on number seven? Further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
The issue about rattlesnakes, I don't think you need to address. That's kind of an inherent danger anywhere in the Black Hills. And maybe even the fire danger issue, because that's kind of, I don't know if there's any unique fire danger here, unless you guys feel it's related to the, to the size of the potential, you know, water hydrant. I don't know that particular part of it. But it seemed to me like the egress issue and the cliffs and the no trespass were like the major, unique things about this property.
Other comments?
Chair?
Bill?
I think, I think it's probably well to emphasize the other issues as well. I mean, the rattlesnakes, yeah. We're all aware that they're here. But it's nice to be, to be reinforced or reminded that there are other dangers other than just that we don't think about all the time. So I would, I would rather see that left into the notice or recommendation.
Travis, you look like you had comments?
I do. I'm thinking about how I want to word them, because I'm primarily a property rights individual. I like individuals to do what they can do with their property, because I think we should be able to, as long as, if it's following within the rules and regulations that we have to work with. This particular item, I hope, I think many of y'all have been here and heard my questions and heard my concerns with this. This particular one has given me some concern for a couple myriad different reasons. Some of them we've talked about legally, so I think I've come over those concerns legally. I think if this is a violation of the, of the, your homeowners association and stuff, unfortunately, it might be a legal issue that y'all have to address, because it's not something within our purview up here. But with that said, I hope you take to account everything that I said about any violations of this. That's something that we have to address. And while I'm on the fence of it, I don't know if I can say that I'm comfortable with the, with the company, the way that they've presented everything to us. If they meet the requirements of this, I think that it is something that can be passed and gone forward with. But again, I would let you guys know that if there's a violation of the ordinances, you guys need to let us know. You need to let the county commissioners, the planning office know. You need to file a complaint through them, also through the sheriff's department, document it the best way you can, so we can get the most amount of evidence out there. So that if it does come back for review, you have that evidence for said review. But as it stands, with the wording in there, and as long as the organization meets all the requirements of taking care of those action items, and meets our, you know, the concerns of signing for letting the individuals know about trespassing and safety items, I can't see a reason why not to vote for this, even though I'm kind of hung up on it, on the aspect of, from what I just said before about, I'm concerned about the management of it. But it's your, it's your neighborhood, so you're going to have to pay attention to it. And let us know. Because that's something that is going to be on the back of my mind if you come in here six months to a year out of the way. And we'll be asking some harder questions at that point in time.
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
And I think I've stated this before, this is a new company, and I don't think we have a history, one way or the other, to make a decision that they are or aren't managing properties properly. So I think we need to give them a chance.
But I think we did talk about that last time when Deb was here, and she made a point, point out that if you're a property manager, you know what the regulations are. And that's where her concern was as well. That's why I'm just, that's why I'm concerned. You're a property manager, you had a previous name, you're a new company, and y'all were doing things outside of the rules. And it's still, you know, I get it, you're not 14 days right now. But I would think in a good faith gesture, from a business perspective, we didn't tell you to cease and desist. But, you know, as a good faith gesture to those in the community that you're wanting to run this business in, it would have been nice to say, you know what, let's hold off until we get everything done. My opinion. It's just my opinion and just my side view on it. But Deb didn't mention that, though.
I guess the comment that I would have is, I mean, kind of what you're saying is, I would expect that at least a good faith effort until the permit was approved. I think most of it. I think Laurie's right on Silver City. I think those did continue to operate. But I mean, we know at least three instances, sounds like April and May 28th currently. If this got continued a month, would 14 days be exceeded? You know, that's only a guess that, it's a question in my mind. I know, as we went through the original process on the vacation home rentals, one of the items discussed was the review in a year. There is some push on the initial ordinance about not reviewing that frequently. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion, well, let's see what the management style is of the rental agency, and, you know, take action. You know, just my time on this commission, it's rare that we actually yank a permit once it's issued. So I mean, to me, I'd rather be careful upfront. And I think sometimes we overlook the very first thing to consider, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity, anyway. But, and even with this rewrite, there was a lot of discussion on, maybe we need to be a little more discerning than we have in the past, rather than just a checklist. They've met everything, so it's automatic. If it's automatic, we shouldn't be hearing it.
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
Would you like to have the review changed to six months and let them have a summer season?
With a new firm, I guess, I don't know how new it is, since we found out that some of the players were involved with the previous, just under a different name. So are they new?
Well, you can't, I mean, I would argue it is a new firm, because they have an emphasis for short-term rentals versus long-term.
Yeah.
She asking for a review in six months?
Well, just asking whether that would make a difference, I guess. I don't know how about the other people in the commission feel about it, so.
Mr. Chair? Because as I recall, the last time or the first time we talked about this, that Mr. Goodwin indicated that most of their rentals for property like this are during the summer months.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would support doing a review of this property in four to six months. But I would yield to the
Motion maker?
Motion maker.
I would be agreeable to a six-month period, because that's pretty much our standard, six months per year.
Okay with the second, or?
Okay with the motion and second, or so our condition 14 would be changed to be reviewed in six months, or on a complaint basis, or as directed by Painton County Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair, Jerry, could you tell me how number seven would actually read?
Okay. So we add in the information that it might be a little bit longer condition, because after the sheriff's department, we could put in there, Brittany, can you help me with the ingress egress one? That there's only one ingress, ingress and egress. We could, that, we could add that language in there.
Well, they already have to have in the evacuation plan. That's required by item number five. But I think the, my question is, is, so we, there will be a requirement for a supplementary sign within the vacation rental that discusses trespassing, topography, that kind of stuff?
Mr. Chair?
Laurie.
I think what you could do with item number seven is, at the end of it, you could just, I mean, there is, there's a requirement for an interior informational sign. And you could just add the phrase, including the unique dangers, or whatever words you want to use, for this property, and then have a list. Rattlesnakes, fire, trespass, because there are no fences, and the Spring Canyon cliffs, or Spring Creek, or wherever you want to describe that.
On that informational sign, I mean, it's basically at the rental agency's discretion, too. I mean, they can add whatever they wanted to. But I mean, I agree, I'm in agreement in this case with the unique situation that it should be listed. But I'm just saying, I'm, vacation rentals that I've seen, a lot of times, they have a lot more lists on where to put out garbage, and what day garbage is, and all kinds of other information that's on there. So, I mean, they, they're at the discretion to add that regardless, if they want to.
So we could add?
But I think, Mr. Chair, but I think it could be added to, you know, the existing informational signs, just something that makes the rent, makes the vacation home renter user aware that there are dangers unique to this property.
That's, my understanding, is part of the motion right now, as it stands, so.
Right. So you could add that information after the sheriff's department?
Rich, I guess that was your question. Are you clear enough?
Yes.
What Jerry's going to add to the?
Yeah, that, some of the language that Laurie is saying, that to add that, to that informational sign, you could put that there are uniqueness to this property regarding topography, rattlesnakes, fire danger, ingress egress, the, including beware of the cliffs. And we could clean that up a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hang on, roll call vote?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
No.
Travis?
Bill.
Bill?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, item 21 is a construction permit to construct an 800-foot-long driveway that will provide access to a property in the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter of section nine. This is located just northwest of Rushmore Ranch Estates off of Highway 40. The driveway will consist of a 12-foot-wide surface with four inches of 3/4-inch base coarse gravel. There will be a ditch installed to address drainage on the upper side of the road. A private access easement was filed with registered deeds in January to allow access across private property to this property. The private access easement goes through this portion of what they call lot number four and lot number seven. All of the lots in this area are zoned general agriculture district and get access off a Martin Ranch Trail. However, this particular lot, which is lot eight up here, indicated on here, is off that private access easement. And the, like I said, they have, went in front of the Board of Commissioners to get variances to their road construction with engineered plans. Those were approved at the June 6 meeting. However, they did continue the section line, crossing the section line, construction till one of the commissioners could go out and do a site visit on the site. And I did speak with the applicant, and to my knowledge, that has occurred. So staff is recommending approval of this construction permit with eight conditions. And the applicant is in the audience, if you do have questions for him.
Questions for Brittany? Actor wishing to speak? Staff's recommendation is for approval with eight conditions. If anyone wants to make a motion to that effect?
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve, and we get back to the beginning, figure what it fits. Construction permit 17-07 with, are there any conditions on it?
Eight.
Eight conditions.
Second?
Motion is second. Further discussion? Hang on, now, in all favor, roll call. To you, staff.
Laurie?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Item twenty-two.
Okay, item twenty-two is a minor plat and subdivision regulation variance to create lot J and lot K and a well easement of Rushmore Ranch Estates. Um, this was in front of you as a layout plat, um, back in, I wanna say, May, April or May. Um, the board did approve that layout plat on April fourth, two thousand seventeen with eight conditions. Um, they are requesting to subdivide this eight-point-seven-five-acre lot into two four-point-three-seven-acre lots and dedicate a well easement. The applicant is also requesting subdivision regulation variances for five-foot topographic contours, road improvements, and percolation tests and profile hole information. Um, during the layout plat process, they did have these as H one and H two and at the recommendation of the register of deeds, they have changed that to lot J and lot K because of the confusion with, um, H lots for highway lots. Um, the proposed lots, lot J will consist of four-point-three-seven acres, which includes a well easement. It is zoned planned unit development. The planned unit development was approved in two thousand two. Um, it is vacant of any structures. Um, the access is off of George Place or Borgum Road. Um, there is no special flood hazard area to our knowledge as it is not studied. Um, this is located in the Rushmore Ranch Road District, so any approaches or, and that would be approved through the road district. Um, staff is recommending approval of the layout plat with five conditions and recommending approval of a portion of the subdivision regulation variances, um, just the topographic contour waving and the waving road improvements. However, staff is recommending denial of the percolation test and soil profile hole information for the proposed lots based on the concerns from the environmental planner, um, due to the proximity of the, um, Madison Aquifer area in the area. And there are, there have been quite a few lots out there that have been, that do have bedrock in them, so he would like to verify.
Assume you, uh, separate action, uh, first on subdivision variances?
Yes, please.
Staff is recommending, uh, approval, as Brittany just said, for the waving, the requirement for five-foot contours and waving road improvements. However, staff is, uh, recommending denial of the perk test and soil profile hole information.
So moved. I moved, or I should say, I, I moved to approve subdivision variance seventeen dash zero six. Uh, I can just say as written.
As presented?
As presented, yeah.
We have a motion second for further discussion. Is Appkin here wishing to speak as far? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any none? All in favor? I guess, uh, roll call?
Laurie?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
We've approved the waiver of the five-foot contours and the road improvements, but, uh, denied the perk test and the soil profile hole. Uh, recommendation for minor plat, staff is recommending approval with five conditions.
I move to approve, uh, minor plat PL seventeen dash thirteen with the, uh, five conditions as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Any none? Uh, roll call?
Laurie?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis? Bill?
Aye.
Item twenty-three.
So, item twenty-three is a county board report. Uh, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the May twenty-two, May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen planning commission meeting. The board of commissioners from the April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen planning commission meeting continued the below item to the June sixth board of commissioners meeting and at this meeting made a motion to continue the item again. It was the planned unit development re- review PU zero-nine-zero-two for the salvation army.
Was that just continued for one meeting or just?
Um, I was not at that meeting. The, it was, did another meeting?
Yeah, just for another meeting. It had something to do with, uh, fires, the first suppression stuff again, I think.
Any other thing on county board report?
Don't have anything.
Items from the public? Items from staff?
So, um, we did hire a new planner too. Um, he is in the audience. His name's Frank Wayseth. So I'll have him come up here and introduce himself and give you some background where he's from and, and stuff. So he's been a good addition so far the week that you've been here. So...
Hello, my name's Frank Wayseth. I'm a recent graduate from the University of Iowa, studied urban and regional planning. So I'm here, um, working under Brittany, um, primarily doing JS work for addressing and, as well as some environmental work in terms of onsite wastewater permitting. Um, excited to be here and, uh, new to the area, so I'm, uh, looking forward to getting to know everyone here and working with you guys.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
You'll enjoy the area.
I'm sure I will.
All right. Um, the next item is, uh, alternative energy, energy moratorium. That was lifted, so that will go into effect and those will be in the new zoning.
Yeah, we'll add that and so everybody will get some new zoning books with that in there.
And then the mining ordinance update, they finished up, um, the review of that at the last, last Monday. And now it's going to staff review and to the state's attorney's office. So once it goes through the legal review, it will be presented to you guys.
I'm glad that's done, just so you know.
All right, Mr. Chair. I have, I just have a request for Jerry. When the new books are updated, is there any way they can make them wa- their way into these drawers? Cause I know that I always forget mine when I head to the meeting, but I use this one in this drawer all the time.
Oh, do you? Okay. Yeah, I usually make extra copies, so I'll just remember to bring the extra copies down and...
Either that or I'm just gonna take mine and throw it in the drawer with my name on it.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Right, and the building permit report, I'm gonna have Amy give that.
Hi, um, so a couple of things about the building permit report. We wanted to try something, PJ and I were talking about rearranging it so it made a little bit more sense and was easier to read. Um, there's two different versions of it. So that first one, that's printed landscape, it's the same information, it's just generated with bigger font and you, it's a little bit easier to read. Um, if you guys don't like it, we can go back to the old one. Um, basically, the two things, couple of things worth noting, um, the disparities generated to, from the residential additions, so the code four thirty-four, pretty much due to the different, the change in, um, coding. So, the way that we've labeled things as sheds, barns, wasn't properly allocated in two thousand sixteen. So those are the differences. Um, that's basically how it affected the change in that bottom, in the last column, all the way to the right. Um, so we are up in the total permits, forty-five percent, but we're down a two percent in the permit fees collected. Um, so, yeah, those are the couple of differences. Anybody have any comments?
I have a quick question. So, in two thousand sixteen, the year-to-date was five million ninety-seven thousand. And I'm just looking at single-family homes. Two thousand seventeen year-to-date is four-point-nine million, but it says the percent change year-to-date in dollars is, uh, positive three percent, but it would be less, right? Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing which column you're just...
Row one.
Uh-huh.
Single-family. So, twenty sixteen year, year-to-date was five million ninety-seven thousand. Two thousand seventeen year-to-date is four million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
That was an oversight on my part and not changing it probably to red.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I like the kinda side-by-side rather than up-down.
Yeah, I do too. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
So then we'll make those changes for them.
I agree. I like that.
Any other questions on the building permit? Thank you.
Okay, and then in your packets, did you get the view to two thousand forty community workshop summary, um, from Matrix? Was that put in there? The, the different comments that had come back from, um, I don't have that in my book here, from the different, you can look at this one. From the workshops. So Matrix did take, um, all of the comments from the different groups and, and put 'em together and just kinda came back with some of the things that they were concerned about. Um, it did, you know, in, in almost all of them, it was, you know, affordable housing, um, resources, you know, maintaining resources, um, you know, a sense of community and things like that. So it was most of the similar things, um, that we normally see. Um, we do have workshops starting again next week on Tuesday. So there'll be Tuesday in Keystone at six o'clock at the Keystone Community Center. Um, there'll be one on Wednesday, June twenty-first at six PM at the Wall Community Center. And then Thursday, June twenty-second at six PM at the Black Hill State University Rapid City Campus out off of Elkvale Road.
Brittany?
Sure.
Are those all at six PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there any questions?
Uh, meetings during the day that they're having with staff, is it different than, or just getting different people in the from?
Uh, these are actually the public meetings.
Yeah, I know. Maybe like last time, and PJ had sent out an email saying if anyone wanted to meet from during the day.
Yeah, those are different than last time. I think it's going over some of the things that they had discussed during these meetings, some of the public and some of the comments that were made, um, during those workshops.
Thank you.
And then the last one is, um, planning commission members. Um, this was, um, put in the Rapid City Journal, the Hill City Prevailor and the Wall, or the Pennington County Current, the request for a planning commission?
Probably at least the three. The commissioner's office would've done that, yeah.
Okay. And it looks like all statements of interest must be submitted to the commission office by Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at four PM. And then interviews and appointments will be conducted at the Wednesday, July fifth Board of Commissioners meeting. So, I think your turn?
Me and Barb.
You and Barb.
Our term.
So there's two positions being filled.
You said the appointments are gonna be on July fifth?
Yes, the July fifteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Brittany?
Yes.
The county board meeting is at nine AM?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I guess, Jerry, I can talk to you. I mean, I thought, uh, PJ wanted me to stay around for the July tenth meeting, but I mean, isn't that...
Yes, that's correct. Um, cause when they...
But if you have the new appointees by then.
Right, but they wanted to, um, at least get them to maybe come to one meeting if they're able to.
Okay.
And still, yeah, so you guys would do, do the tenth meeting and then they would start the very end meeting in July. Yes.
Yeah, that's what I confirm on that.
Yes. They wouldn't even have their packets on time, would they?
No, they would not.
Oh, yeah, that's true too. Any?
That's all I have.
Items for membership then?
Is Michelle still there?
Yes.
Could I have, um, could I have your phone number to ask you a question?
Yes, uh, three-nine-four-two-one-nine-one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last four.
Three-nine-four-two-one-nine-one.
Is there a good time to call you?
Call me anytime. I'll also give you my cell. That's two-zero-nine-two-seven-five-one.
Two-zero-nine-two-seven-five-one, three-nine-four-two-one-nine-one.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from membership? Now that entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Need a roll call for that, I imagine, so.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Laurie?
Yes.
Rich?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Agreed. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Jerry, when you say Laurie and Lloyd, they almost sound the same.
Do they?